I'm an investor in real estate, in local real estate. Several of our MCRRA members are here tonight. Let me give you just a bit of history. Our organization is a nonprofit organization with a mission statement which has education of our members as our primary premise. We are educating ourselves to be the very best rental property owners they could possibly be. We're 101 member strong. We have for various reasons chosen to invest in local real estate rather than foreign options or even conglomerates that perhaps could gain more revenue and greater yields for us personally. Approximately 29 to 40 percent of McGovern Countyans live in rental properties across the county. We serve a very vital purpose, one that the school system cannot do without. We house a very large number of the school student population. If our provisions were not available, those parents who work in the factories and businesses that have migrated to live here would be living outside the county. They would not be in the system. And I get feelers, according to Jim Guinness, one of our term members, of the figure that, and I'm going to use this, Jim, being second party information, but had the taxes remained as they were 10 years ago, the rent that he charges young couples per year would be approximately $950 less. Now, we're not an anti-tax organization by any stretch of the imagination. As a matter of fact, personally, and I'm very thankful for our tax structure. It allows us so many services that have provided service for our local community. Our reason for speaking tonight, however, is to make you, the decision makers and the other attendees here, aware that as a group of residential property owners, we are not in favor of this tax increase. And I ask for the time to give our rationale. It is done. We'd like to give Jim a round of applause for his work.
Thank you. Our next person is Steve Gallant. He's got a lot, he needs three minutes to give you your answer.
That was very gracious. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Over the last few years, we have seen very obvious blatant misspending of funds, whether it was retention of personal attorney for a superintendent or bribery on hundreds of promvo covers. I'm not here to criticize or to complain, but to try to bring unity with the entities that care most about our schools. I lived through changes unnumbered. Educational fads, walls of classrooms that came down, they went up again. New math, old math, the abacus, the slide rule, the outdated equipment that was scrapped and needs higher than my debt. Praying, not praying. Character education, drug education, childcare on campus, removal of childcare on campus, all with acronyms to match each of these programs that if we laid them end to end in a number 50 font, we could probably jokingly lead us someplace afar. Personally, I taught students when my spending budget for the classroom was less than $100. And then again, by the time I retired, I had funds at one time of over $2,000. I can assure you that the students that I taught the year I had less than $100 scored on any given test every bit as well as those that I had when I had $2,000 to spend. Please understand, I know very well, and Dr. Thompson has done a fantastic job of explaining the budget process. It's very complicated and far beyond the scope of certainly me and most of us here. I also understand there's state and federal regulations that determine what and how it can be spent. And I applaud these folks in our educational entity right here in McGovern County that have the ability and see us through. But we all know, if government or quasi-government agencies spent their dollars as we spend our own, there would be great budget adjustments. Our present society, me included, seems to have very great difficulty distinguishing between what we know as a need and what we know as a want. As investors, we do operate to make profit. If a rental house has had a mailbox tossed into the grass, it's been rusting, the first reaction is step out to the hardware store, pay a monus 13.97 for a new mailbox. If I can take the wire brush to clean it, the pliers to straighten it, $3.88 worth of spray paint, which in fact will paint probably five mailboxes, I've used my resources much more wisely. Whether a for-profit or a nonprofit organization, we're bound by ethics to use our resources wisely. So often, as we're taught in money management classes from the get-go, money is seldom the answer to our money problems. In closing.
Thank you. Our next person is Charlie Guinness.
I just think that the taxes over the last, I don't know, several years, just keeps going up. I know I'm on fixed income and, you know, I don't get a rate. You know, I don't, I have my lawn yard also. And, you know, I live on a fixed income. I spend more than I make if there's somebody coming to get my ass out of there. I can bet that, like I said, we're, I know I'm paying a lot of taxes and the million of minimums taxes never go down. I'll be 60 years old in January, I don't know if a tax law or something like that goes up, once they get the money, it's blown down. What they're left and you got a little bit less than this part of the year, well, if you don't spend it, you're gonna lose it, you know? That's what it's made and I don't think it can turn around. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Our next person is Kimberly Levens.
The main points I'd like to make, because most of them are the same as what everyone else has made, my issue has a lot to do with, it always seems to be an alternate. Either you want 4% or you take the compensating. I don't see any discussion on taking anything less than the 4%. Most people, the average people out there, do not get 4% rates. You know, there are some people who do. They get bigger rates. Now, they invest, they get much larger return on their investments than that. But you're not just charging those people, you're charging everyone. Those who own the property and those who rent from the owners of the property. The rent is based on total cost of that property. So everyone in the county is paying for that. And like I said, we don't get 4%, most of us. So there should be some discussion as to taking something other than 4%, you know, all or nothing. And then the big thing too is I know the Chromebooks, wonderful thing. And that's been brought up before about the expense for that. The free lunches for the grade school and middle school, wonderful thing. I don't want to see that go away. It's wonderful. But when we're making decisions on that, it's given to the public, those decisions are based on, we have the extra money to do this, let's do it. If you have the extra money, how are you now saying, we've spent more than we had? Then you didn't have extra money. You should never spend more than you have. You should never spend exactly what you take in because there will always be unexpected expenses. You always have to save some of what you take in. You've got to account for loss of income someplace else, like your seat funding going down. You always have to prepare ahead of time for that. So you cannot continue to spend everything and most of the times more than you take in and then down the road say, now we need this large increase in taxes to make up for that because otherwise we're gonna have to cut. Because when you do that, your cuts that you say has to happen is so large that it scares people to say, oh, well, we don't want to deal with other Chromebooks because honestly, they are a wonderful thing. They're not necessarily being utilized the way they should, but it is nice to have. My daughter's teacher, she really, she utilized the Chromebooks for her classroom.
Next person is Shannon Dennisson.
I'd like to start by thanking everybody that's in the room here today and prioritizing this event in their lives. I know many of us made a lot of sacrifices to be here tonight. I always thought her Madison, she's cheer at the ball field across the road here and I'm missing her very first game to be here tonight. It's how important it is to me. I've been following this stuff for several years now and as someone who's lived here and owned a business here and raising a family here, I've seen nothing but increase after increase on my taxes and put it bluntly, I'm fed up with it. And I'd like to move our board, please make a motion, hopefully we have one board member, maybe two or three, that can make a motion tonight to reduce our tax rate, maybe just take it down by a penny, it's just a penny. But please consider that. You know, and I think it's very important that we start to have some conversations about reducing expenses. The Chromebooks, get rid of them. You know, these AstroTurf football fields, get rid of them, don't replace them, they cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to maintain. These glass buildings that we're building that make our children a target in someone's scope, get rid of, you know, get rid of the glass. I'm sure there's probably is a bulletproof glass around the McNabb Middle School. I know that we spent $15.5 million of your old money building, or not building, but just renovating the middle school. At the last meeting I was at, they stamped, rubber stamped the decision to spend $6,500 on two doors to add to a $4 million locker room. A $4 million locker room. Okay, so we're talking about big numbers here. Our school, put it in perspective, takes in $60 million a year in revenue at this point. $60 million a year. If they take the compensating rate this year, which the compensating rate would be the rate that would bring in last year's revenue, the school board would receive a $250,000 increase. The seat money that will be lost this year due to property assessments growing, which is what we want to see happen in our community, is a $66,000 loss. Put that in perspective, it's 1/100 of 1% of our school system's budget. 1/100 of 1%. It would be the equivalent of someone making $20,000 a year, which is the typical average income in McGovern County, reducing their budget by just a few dollars, maybe like $5 or $10. I've got the number somewhere if someone would like to ask. But we're talking about big numbers. When we talk about, you know, a tenth of a penny or a half a penny increase, it's a big number. The raise that they're wanting to grant tonight, to approve tonight, is gonna represent a significant increase of several hundred thousand dollars. And it's not just this year because it becomes part of the new rate, it's next year, it's the year after that, the year after that. 10 years from now, because of compounding, this little simple increase is gonna represent millions of dollars one day in one tax year, millions of dollars. It's a huge, huge increase. If all of our other tax districts in town, our fire department, our EMS, our health department, our extension service, all these other men and women were to take a 4% increase this year, it would be about the same as the 4% increase that our school board is proposing.
Thank you.
So I'm here tonight to share with you, thank you.
Next person is Adam Levens.
Hey, Dr. Thompson, Board of Education members, everyone in the Tivens. My name's Adam Levens, I'm a military veteran. This is my, I've been here just under a year now and I've already seen tax increases. For instance, the registration renewal I just paid. $28 of the $88 for taxes was just for the school. That's almost $6,500 value for you. I think it's insane to ask for more. I understand Dr. Thompson was talking about the registration renewal going down. That's great, but pretty much I just, I think it's insane. Like I said, as far as, I've been here just under a year and I just bought a house and to see that go up as soon as I just bought a house, you know, I don't get it. So for me, I understand people need to be able to eat and so forth, but as us taxpayers, we need to be able to eat as well. And with that being said, I don't know Kentucky law as far as education. I know it might be a sort of a radical idea, but maybe look into a four day school that way, because I've seen, did a little bit of research on that as far as, one of the schools in Georgia, they saved on that $796,000 per school just to reduce one school day. And I understand when doing it, there's different implications as far as people's salary may go down and so forth, but I think we need to look at different alternatives instead of just saying, hey, give us 4% increase because we need this, we need that. I know a lot of people made a great argument as far as the Chromebooks. I have a son that's in the second grade at Mount Sterling Elementary. I haven't seen anything in regards to that. So I don't understand why the money's being spent on that. And like I said, pretty much in opposition with the tax increase. Thank you.
Our next person is Judy Gaston. Do you pass your time, bud?
Thank you. Do you, I'm gonna be real brief. One of the slides that was on the board, there's no way to decrease expenditures by $1 million a year without the same, in some way negatively impacting direct services to students, classrooms, and staff. I agree with that. But what is the 10-year plan? What is the 5-year plan? You know, I would like to see along with a increase of taxes, a plan that says over the next five years or over the next 10 years, here's what we plan to do to right this situation, not just do it all at once. Let's do it over, you know, let's take 1% this year. Let's look at it again next year and bring some type of plan that says, here's our reductions and here's where we're at on that reduction plan. We want to do another 1% extra, whatever that number is. I don't believe that, I almost feel like 4% is a knee-jerk reaction because of what we stated about, you know, the last administration issues we had, trying to right this as quick as possible. That puts a burden on taxpayers, it puts a burden on people who are paying their property tax, their vehicle tax, their real estate tax. I'm a small business owner in this community, also a real estate investor. So I see, I'm a vehicle owner, so it's tax, 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 taxes. They're going out in their direction. Nothing makes me happier than to rent a piece of property to a young couple that has children and be able to provide a place. But then on the flip side, when my taxes go up, I have to go to them and say, sorry, but your rent's going up. And that puts even more of a burden on them. So I'm in high voters of 4% and I urge you to look at this deeper and I know that it's not going to be comfortable to cut services, it never is, but I urge you to come up with some type of plan that you can present that shows us over the next five years or 10 years where we're gonna get back on track.
Our next person is Patty Chakert.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and I'm glad to see such a good crowd here tonight. I have to agree with the lady that spoke first. When I was 57 years old, a few years ago, I had to quit work because of my legs, so I have a disability. And we draw disability, we've not got a raise for the past three or four years, I don't think we're moving up the last. But it's like $20, you know, that's not a whole lot, but trying to pay all your expenditures and your property taxes, although I didn't get a rate because disability, I understand that, but it's still high and you've got a limited income. My daughter and her family are raising four children, they carry a modest trailer and two's in school and two's at home, so she can't work and it costs her more in daycare than it would to try to work. So it's gonna make it a hardship on them to pay for that tax on their trailer. We already pay school taxes on every utility bill. That could be wrong today. And then we're already providing a paper cleaner, paper towels, Kleenexes, pens for the teachers, so is the toilet paper net. I mean, you know, we're supplying everything like that, so I wonder about that. A neighbor told me just before I came to the meeting that her granddaughter that is in the fourth grade with her spelling, she comes home with her spelling paper and they've not even corrected her misspelled words. I have another friend that her daughter in ninth grade last year, before she could leave her a note, it had to be written in, uh, printed instead of written, because they're not teaching person. It's like a foreign language to these kids. So I'm wondering about the wasteful spending that other people have even talked about. I just also wonder how many coaches do it need. Every time you pick the paper up, there's another coach added. I'm wondering if you could just check on personnel and maybe trim the budget there. I am a big fan.
Thank you. Next person is Del Shra.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, for having this meeting and letting people know what's going on, and the other members of the board, Attorney Williams. You could not contain all the people with this ability. If the persons who are paying rent realize what it's gonna do, I'm not talking about hundreds, I'm talking about thousands of people it's gonna be impacting. And you've already heard some stories like the first lady, and I'm grateful for her because I think she found the only person in the building that's older than me. By the way, I still go a few yards, I don't know if you have any background. Do you even know a little bit about my background? I served in the 2nd State Senate, I was very fortunate to be on the education debate. So I know all these arguments and so forth, I've heard them for years. I was reeling in the town, 32 miles down here. They tore down the nicest building in town, spent $12 million to build the education center. The judges hardly go there, they don't even like it, so fantasy. The tinfoil is beautiful. There's waste that's impacting all of us now and in our business, landlords, property owners, something's gotta be done to take the burden off of the people who are victims of the town. You know, we spent $4 million to do a library, I've never been in a library. I'm hardly a scholar, but I have a great deal of education. Why in the world can't we cut back some of these expenses and be concerned about our community across this county? The people are gonna be impacted by this because you've got one of the biggest property owners in this county here today. People have no choice but to change their own structure, rates, because it's already been alluded to, it's just not the property taxes. It's one tax after another. Look at your utility bills, look at all the bills you get. The school system, I guess, gets 50% right off the top and, you know, it's so great to not have to pick up the paper and see the controversy that we've had to deal with in this community for years. It's impacted the children. I'm thankful that I've got one granddaughter left in the school system here and I want to be supportive of the school system. But you've got some great people on this school board, some of them are business people themselves. They know you have to draw a line and a treaty of time that you can't pass things on. I've seen waste in government, I've served in government, I've been a commissioner, I've had hundreds of people working for me. The time has come that we've all gotta tighten our belts. We gotta tighten the belts and I know state workers that I'm familiar with that worked for the state government for 16 years and have never gotten 1% raised, not a 4% raised. Is that true or not? They have not gotten a raise. So something needs to be made aware in the newspaper church at night and they do their job, they'll print in the paper how this is gonna impact thousands of citizens across this community.
Thank you.
Who have a hard time paying their rent as it is now. Thank you so much.
Dr. Thompson, do you have any closing statements you'd like to make?
There were just a few points that were brought up, I just don't want any incorrect information out there. Somebody mentioned coaches. When the impact of the salary schedule changes that the board made between last year and this year are fully realized, there are significant changes for coaches. We expect with all of our extra duty pay, which includes things other than coaching as well, but by the time all of those come to fruition, there's a, as people resign or leave and new people are hired on, they come in at a different place in the salary schedule, we just pay about $100,000 or more, savings on that. There was a comment about $6,500 for locker room.
I just got on, I'm, no, there was a sign sheet over here, there was a sign sheet. No, there was, no, in order to sign up to speed, you had to fill out one of these papers.
It said sign a sign sheet.
The sign sheet is for anybody that's here, came to the meeting tonight.
We already know that. That's why we signed it.
You've got 10 minutes, I think you've gotta get it on that one. Who is it?
Me, I'm one of them. Who else would please tell a story?
You've got three minutes.
My name is James Broden, James, if some of you guys know me that night, and the board agrees here. I trade, I've worked with members, created my life, and I didn't know what he had, it's already been said, it's been said well, I just wanna bring up a couple more things. Dr. Thompson, I think I understand, you're saying that the higher praise of values is causing our seat funding to go down?
By how much?
Per student?
For every million dollars increase in assessment, the seat.
How much per student?
Goes down 3,000. I don't have it as a breakdown, but.
I didn't. This year's seat funding, if you can tell, is $5,027 per student. Next year's seat funding decrease is $4,194 per student. It's $33 less per student.
It said sign a sign sheet.
The sign sheet is for anybody that's here, came to the meeting tonight.
That's why they sign it. You've got ten minutes. I think you've got to get it on that one.
Who is it? You've got three minutes.
My name is James Broden. James, if some of you guys know me that night, and the board agrees here. I trade, I work with members, great in my life, and I didn't want to rehash. It's already been said. It's been said well. I just want to bring up a couple more things. Uh, Dr. Thompson, let me try to understand. You're saying that the higher praise values is causing our seat funding to go down?
By how much per student? For every million dollars increase in assessment, the seat funding goes down three thousand. I don't have it as a breakdown.
I didn't. This year's seat funding, who can that, is five thousand twenty-seven dollars per student. Next year's seat funding decrease is four thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars per student. It's thirty-three dollars less per student. It's not a big amount. Just for perspective, that five, that four thousand nine hundred, four nine nine, whatever we're getting next year for seat funding, is still three hundred and forty-three hundred dollars, thirty-three hundred and forty-three hundred dollars more than the state average. Last year's seat funding for this county was four hundred dollars more than the state average. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm the team player. I know all of you and like you all, but the reality is, it's not a funding problem. This is an overspending problem.
Was there someone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll clarify something.
I have somebody back here that had already hugged their hand good.
Hi, my name is Paige Cassidy. I'm here as a parent of a child in Montgomery County. I would not have too much of a problem with tax hike if money was utilized to benefit all of the children within Montgomery County. My daughter is four years old and was denied preschool unless I paid for her to go every month because she is advanced for her age. This is not where the money is being utilized to, you know, for all of the children in this county. It is being utilized for certain ones only. Because my daughter is smart, because she is verbal, because she doesn't have a disability, because she doesn't have any kind of, whereas she is not being kindergarten ready, she was told that unless I paid two hundred dollars a month, which would be very difficult to me, working on ten dollars an hour, paying for my house, paying for my car, paying my utilities, paying bills that already comes out of that taxes, I would have to pay two hundred dollars a month for my child to go to a state-funded, county-funded preschool, right here at the Early Learning Center. As a parent, my child deserves that right just as well as anybody else to go to a state-funded and locally funded school. Again, people have brought up the Chromebooks. I've had students that are in high school. My son just recently graduated. He spent four years. That Chromebook is useless. It is hard for him to get onto the programs, for him to be able to submit his work. There are very few teachers that utilize the program. It's a waste of money. We pay enough taxes that if we are paying for these taxes, for these increases, every child in Montgomery County, regardless of their health benefits or anything, should be able to attend the schools, period. We're not giving that to our students. There are students that my, in the last five years that I've been in Montgomery County, my school supply list has increased by almost sixty dollars this year as compared to last year. Why is school supplies? Because I am supplying paper towels. I am supplying handkerchiefs. This is stuff that our teachers should not even have to pay for. This is stuff that should be funded. Four hundred thousand dollars for astroturf for kids to play football is not a necessity. Grow some grass.
Thank you.
Fill the entire school.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, the facilities, the numbers that I gave, uh, I won't use the woman's name, but she was a former tenant of mine eight years ago. She lived at my first apartment, it's about twenty-seven years ago, which one goes off of Winchester Road. And when she left me ten years ago, her and her husband, they paid three hundred and twenty-five dollars. When she came back, she's had a change in life. She came back to rent literally the same apartment. It's four hundred. And I really stopped my thought and I knew the numbers and I went back and I double-checked. Floyd lost our PBAs here. I, Floyd, I'm sorry, anyway. I invite the five members of this school board, Floyd can show you my tax assessments and my rates. I give him permission publicly. All five of you can see them. That entire increase, seventy-five dollars over the last ten years, is just from the increased in county property tax rates. All of it. So it is nine hundred dollars a year. You all do a wonderful job. You spend. Your whole goal is to reduce kids who are ready to start a life, start a family. Then you tax them where they can afford to live. You've got to think about the year after they graduate. Thank you.
Again, I just want to thank everybody for your comments. Appreciate it very much, everyone coming out and sharing. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor of focusing, aye? Aye. Any opposed? Vote for your ex-faba. All in favor of focusing on, on any of those of hearing's spoken?
I didn't get all of them.
There's a lot of numbers. Sorry about that.
It makes sense though?
Yeah, okay.
Well, you were going with the labor board. They're on the bill there. I do, you know, understand taking less than 4% and, you know, looking back at hindsight, hindsight, you know, there's things we should have done maybe several years ago. And then now we're having to make up things for, were things that were put in place that were not in our control. And now we're having to be, maybe some of us, whatever a vote comes out, the people that we're having to pay for it. Now, I agree with reducing the taxes. I mean, that's a great idea. Hopefully someday we can see that. You know, and I really like the five-year plan that Steve Dillard had said about, let's sit down and make a plan. What are we going to do this year? What are we going to do next year? What are we going to do? Let's look at the budget. Let's see what we're going to need so the whole public knows it doesn't have to come up in surprises. I do, I would like some appreciation from you all that out of the seven out of the eight years and our tenure on the board, we haven't raised taxes. You know, that hasn't been done in every tax-raising organization in this county. So I do good hope that sometimes, you know, if we, whatever happens tonight, it's kind of like being a referee. We're going to make some people happy, we're going to make some people mad. But, you know, if we don't raise taxes, how many are going to come up and say, you know, a year from now? Think, think, it's not, it's not about that. But thank, let's thank us at least for not raising them for the seven years and you haven't had to keep, we don't keep raising them every year. Some, if you look at them one slide every year, they do raise them every year. We haven't. I like the part about what Patsy said about trimming the budget. We're going to have to anyway, whatever we choose, we have to do it. We cannot, the 4% will not make it out. Think about all of our teachers, the money that they spend, all of our educators. You know, they, we're in one of the most, they're in one of the most important professions ever in our children's life. They make the impression, if any of you of us don't know that, look on Facebook, Bath County, Montgomery County, and look what Jerry Thatcher did for many years to those children. He made an impact. And that's what our teachers are doing and that's what we want to do. We have great facilities, we have great teachers, we have a great administrator, we have a wonderful superintendent, and I think we have a very fine board who takes everything into consideration.